George, when you settle in, we will pledge allegiance to the plan. We pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of America. In this new republic, for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and good evening to all those who are watching us from the comfort of their house. Welcome, everybody, and I want to start off by saying happy holidays and Merry Christmas to everybody. So we're going to start with here, there's not much delay. And Leah, I'm going to hand this over to you. We have no communications, televisions, communications. And so we're going to start with this appointment of the temporary treasurer until the position is filled. Board, I ask that you make a motion to appoint temporary treasurer until the position is filled, with a start date of January 3rd. Okay, Board, can I get a motion for 1.4 to move the appointment for the temporary treasurer forward? All right, motion, second.
I'll make the second.
Is there any discussion on this at this time? Board President, you need to explain your naming. Oh, well, that's discussion. At this time, we are going to be naming Leah Duvasich as a temporary treasurer while we are in a position where our CFO has resigned. And put this in kind of a spot as to who can maintain that position as treasurer. Really, you have been, everything has been set up, right, and you as the treasurer currently. So this temporary appointment is so that I can make sure that payroll is approved in a timely manner. I am currently working with our previous CFO, Megan Jamron, in the process. This would be for short term because legally you have to appoint someone. That being said, what I took over as interim superintendent, my name is on all the accounts, as is the CFO, he's no longer with us. And we'll get to some more of the details of the CFO position. Yeah. And it's also understandable that the work that needs to be done to change this is somewhat larger. Right, so you have to work with both your Centure Bank located in Griffith. You also have to work with your SDS system, which also speaks to the system. The corporate level with Centure, it is pretty.
Very rigorous and a lot of work if you've ever had any type of corporate or even non-for-profit type of experience. It's a lot to know if you run for school board, it's even a lot of work because you have to have bank account set up. So it's just temporary as treasurer, but I mean, Realce is being, she's already on the accounts because superintendent is, because if anything happens in a matter of an emergency situation, someone still has to be on the background to prepare all that so our staff gets paid. So if anything happens to CFO in a matter of emergency situation, the superintendent at any moment does approve that. So that's the reason.
Plus after legal review, we've looked at the situation where the interim CEO cannot only serve as interim CEO, they can also serve as treasurer. So there's no persuasion against that under any of the code. So at the end of the day, I suppose, forward, we're waiting, we're just using a chance, we can treasure as well, and then go ahead and do a search or, you know, do an appointment with the CFO later. Back of student.
We do anticipate this to be short-lived, between you. Until January 3rd, real short. Okay, any more discussion, Board? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same sign of opposed. This motion carries. And Leah, Superintendent Duvasich, Assistant Superintendent Duvasich, or Interrogent Superintendent, I believe you have an update that you want to share with the community. Yes, good evening. I want to ask for continued thoughts and prayers for our teacher, Trish Dotson, as she has been struggling with her health. I know that there is a GoFundMe set up. I think we have a T-shirt fundraiser. So $5 for every purchase goes back directly to her towards her medical bills. We shared it on the elementary PTC page and also on the GPS parent support page. And I know some of the teachers have it as well. But if you need that link, you can reach out to me by email or even on Facebook. And many of the teachers had it as well. But we only had adult sizes, or no, I shouldn't say we, I had no part of it, sorry. The teachers did it all. I'm just sharing it from the PTC level. There was only adult sizes set up at this point that they could get out as fast as possible. I know they were trying to work on that for kids as well. And then we are working on a bracelet fundraiser, those rubber bracelets. So we're trying to get those ordered ASAP as well. So we'll be selling those in the school and that will go directly back to her for her medical bills too. Okay, and then also, Shelley's aboard, we would be able to contact a teacher at Wadsworth. If you are willing to donate, we'll want the link for her GoFundMe account. Tracy Whitman is not with us tonight. She is currently with Santa. He needed her, so I apologize for that. Our CFO has resigned, noting that she needs to be with her family at this time. We do wish her well. Tonight, I will ask the Board to approve a CFO. I would prefer not to release her name at this time because I want to give this candidate an opportunity to speak with her employer directly about their departure. I have not yet discussed future dates for community meetings. I have made the recommendation, and the Board agrees. Regarding the referendum? Yes, regarding the referendum, that we want to work with Baker Tilly to do a full scope review of our finances on cover any stone unturned. We think we owe that to our community and to the taxpayers. We feel very confident with them. So that we expect within 25 days, we'll have that number. You will be the first one to know that number. But we think that that is the only way to thoroughly get through that review. Right. We will need to have an additional board meeting in January because the Board will be first asked to vote on the language. And that second meeting, they will have to vote to put it on the ballot in May, as we discussed previously. I want to thank the Griffith Town Council for approving the 75% reduction on permit fees as we are in phase four of projects, bond projects, right now. So they approved that reduction for the rest of this year and all of next year. So I want to thank them for that. I do want to say happy birthday to Board Member Jason Jakes, who shares a birthday coincidentally with Councilman Jim Barker.
Yes.
I hope that everyone has had an opportunity to catch a game, a band concert, choir concert. We've had a lot going on. We have student works presented by a lot of our students, some from Mrs. Ash's class. It's been a very busy couple of weeks here at the G. Santa's here, he's there, he's everywhere. We call it Christmas magic. I want to send a shout out to some students, Ashley Taylor, Brad Rose, Ryan Rose, Nick Rehovak, Megan Land, Abby Cottney, my daughter Grace Owen. They're all out there and have been out there decorating and being jolly and trying to spread the Christmas cheer the last week. Also, special thanks to Michelle Udit, Tracy Whitman, and her husband Julie Martosio, Kathy Planer, Kathy Ruskin, Missy and Derry Robbins for those magic clips that they donated for us when we were in a bind and we really needed them. We would have gotten the lights up and really, yeah. And a really special thanks to Lori Rose, who spent numerous hours, till wee hours, this week, painting helmets gold and painting our footballs gold for decorating. And any other students that we have, we have about eight students out there right now doing hot cocoa for kids. I want to thank Bryce and Sean Graham Jr. for donating a Christmas tree and then mounting it for us. And then Sean Graham Sr. for donating all the hot chocolate that we were able to spread with volunteers for the kids out there right now in our music and theater program. If anyone is still in need of a Christmas dinner, please reach out to me directly. I am again working with Joey Barham. He is a wonderful community member and parent. He is collecting monetary donations. Those go straight to him. We are partnering again with Bridges Coreboard, and we are able to get dinners for our families here in town. I do want to encourage our parents as we head into the holidays to take this opportunity, as you're spending time with one another, to have the conversations with your children about using words that are kind, being respectful, having empathy and respect for one another, regardless of how old they are. I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, happy holidays. I cannot express enough the gratitude that I have for our entire team here. Tonight, I will ask the Board to approve raises for all new non-certified staff, which includes janitors, maintenance, cafeteria maintenance, bus drivers, bus aides, paraprofessionals, nurses. Am I missing anybody?
Secretaries.
Secretaries for well-deserved raise, if approved by the Board this evening. That will be reflected in their last check in January. That's when it will begin. All of these employees, they deserve this raise indirectly or directly. They make a huge impact on our students each and every day, and I want to firstly thank them for that. That's it? Thank you. Get their spotlight. I understand we're going to see a video?
Yes, you guys sit tight for a second. Come on up. I'm gonna let these guys kind of tell you the background story of this, and then we'll direct you guys from there. Come on up, guys. Go stand right up there. The show's yours.
Hello, everyone. My name is Noah Zamm. I am an 11th grader in Griffith Junior Senior High School. Oh, thank you so much. Just this one? Alright, so my name is Noah Zamm. I am an 11th grader in Griffith Junior Senior High School, and this is my associate.
I am Zachary Patterson. I am also an 11th grade, and I do attend Griffith Junior Senior High School. The purpose of our video that we are going to be showing is we want to show the opportunities that Griffith High School, Middle School can show to both the community and the schools.
So pretty much before we show this video, I kind of want to give a quick rundown and quick backstory on kind of what convinced us to make this video. So October 15, 2021, I came into Mr. Mick's office with a presentation kind of just showing what clubs I would like to see in Griffith Junior Senior High School. The main club that I wanted to see was a drone tech aviation club to kind of teach our students about the robotics and aviation. And my second option was a media club. This media club would actually assist students to get the recognition of their extracurricular classes and the sports they do, and also to boost morale. So we leave, he likes the idea, and then full break runs around. And I totally forget about the presentation. So October 22nd, I come back completely forgetting about it, and then Mr. Mick walks up to me and he says, alright, I have a job for you. We get our first project, codename Project Thunder. And pretty much this project is a film that will kind of introduce what we have to offer in Griffith Public Schools as a whole, as a whole district. And so we got to work. We got a tiny office, we got a website, and then we just started editing. And so after three long weeks of numbers of love, support, and feedback from our staff and even a few students, we have officially made a nice and lovely video. So without further ado, I present to you, Griffith Public Schools, booming with opportunities.
And as we get the video set up, if you guys, Board President, come on this side because you're going to have to be able to see it. We'll hit the lights here. Then we'll have questions and answers afterwards.
Make sure you can see. Very good, thank you. Well, exactly. That was really awesome.
Love, love. Thank you so much.
So is there any questions? You guys have any questions about the video? This is something that we want to be able to put out to the students tomorrow during advisory class. It's something that we want to be able to share with the community on Spology, on Facebook, all of those different avenues. Any questions or thoughts?
Absolutely. With you. Yes, we need this.
Yes.
We need PR.
And that was kind of the mindset behind creating this. And this was a group that had the ideas. We worked very well together. And we were even talking about other next projects that we can do to promote the great schools that we have.
Yeah, I think it's great that it's coming from our students.
Oh, Mr. Mick, do you mind if I ask something here?
Go ahead.
So this video is just a mere fraction of the ideas and the concepts that we as students can offer to our staff, to our students, to the whole entire school district. And if we can do this properly, and if we can put the time and effort and resources, we can actually show that the students can do just as well as the professionals out there. Us as the students, us as high schoolers, us as middle schoolers, we have a lot of creativity. We have a lot of creative ideas. And all we need is just a little time and a workspace to do it. And this, I hope, can convince all of us that we have this passion, we have this work effort to just show that Griffith Public Schools as a whole district can provide so many opportunities and so much morale.
Well, I think we as the Board have a desire to be able to provide resources. And that's what we work for.
Yeah. And also, I wanted to say that as a student here, I worked two to three years to try and get a drone tech club in this school. And I remember for a while it was really back off. And when Mr. Mick came to me and he gave me a project, I was genuinely surprised because it's always been my dream to put my name out there to provide for our students, to kind of boost that morale that we all need, especially in times like this. So like, I just want to give this time a special thank you to Mr. Mick and to all of you for letting me even step near here today. It's been an absolute honor. And there's actually a quote that I read a while ago. John F. Kennedy once said, "Do not pray for easy lives, gentlemen. Pray to be stronger men."
Amen. George, did you have something you wanted to say?
I have a question.
Please do ask.
With respect to this, it seems to me if you're getting a lot of people out there to take videos and make videos of one sort or another, this of course would lead very easily into journalistic pursuits of one sort or another.
Yeah.
Have you ever thought of giving a weekly or monthly review of what's happened in school so that you're sneaking around the corridor, taking pictures of people doing things, and then presenting them? So that, number one, you get some experience with photography of one sort or another. And then it would be part of the history of this school system.
Of course. And that's actually a good question. I actually, in sort of a way, have thought about it because when I thought of media club, I generally thought it would be a place that we can actually provide this kind of stuff through social media, through the internet. Because, you know, especially in times like these, when a lot of people are stuck or stuck at home, or, you know, technology is advancing, because the past 50 years, technology has been ridiculously advancing. So it's a lot easier to get attention. So I think media club would be perfect for our students to be able to post and to be able to, you know, kind of give those journalist attributes, like you said. I truly feel that this opportunity can give a lot of students the recognition that they deserve. And I've seen the students that work in extracurricular classes. I've seen students doing sports, and they work super hard. And I really want to get that recognition.
Well, we look forward to the next one.
Of course.
Please do. It's kind of a visual panther press.
Well, looking at what I will comment.
Of course.
The restrictions and limitations that would be placed on the students would be in line with what they would be running into later on, but they wouldn't be quite as severe. So there's plenty of room for them to make mistakes, of course, and I'm not trying to cause them any serious harm, of course. And at the same time, diverting their crap, of course, I think is a very good idea, I think.
No, of course. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Outstanding. Leah, are you presenting finance? I am. When's it open? For November 2021, our expenditures were higher than our revenues by $514,295.76. We have $1,214,150.48 in outstanding grant reimbursements that we are waiting on humans for. Okay. Board report. Don, from the Board that you set up, yes, redevelopment. I don't know why I stumble on that always.
Actually, I've been doing a lot of traveling. I've been keeping tabs with Town Council to see what's been going on. The only thing major going on for the past couple of months outside of normal business is they've just put the golf course up for sale. The town purchased that years ago. And they've actually, between making improvements to as far as flood plain and that sort of thing, they had a couple of salt mines go up over there. So the town has not lost any money on it, but now they're looking to have developed businesses or whatever. So they put it up for sale to see what they can get.
Do you know how much land the town actually gets to sell? No, it's not.
It was about 30 acres, but I think 15 of that is considered flood plain still.
Yeah.
So.
They probably have to have delineation studies regarding the weather that's up there.
Well, I think they've already gone through all.
Yeah, they've done it already. Right.
Yes, and I do know that, not to get into their business, but they have that electronic sign that also brought in a lot of revenue.
Right.
Okay, well, we'll see whatever happens there. And that kind of puts our board report. I don't have any updates from John Dulaček regarding what's going on in the parks. I'll wait till the first of the year here and get moving on that. Board, I do know that everybody has has looked over the, has told me that, you know, we've all looked over the consent agenda. And at this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated. I'll make the motion. Can I get a second? Consent agenda?
I'll make it second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Same sign of opposed. Consent agenda is approved. All right. At this time, we're going to, Superintendent Treasurer, Leah Duvasich, the update for discussion of the return to learn plan. Please explain that, please. Thank you. SR3, we have requirements that every six months you need to publicly review your return to learn plan. We need to do that and offer public comment on that, so we are going to do that at this time. At this time, I have not changed my position of recommendation. I do believe in that parents have a choice, and they need to decide whether it's appropriate for their child to mask or not. Same with our staff. No changes to be made at this time. Okay, it is open up for comment, but it's comment only. And I want everybody's attention to this email behind us. Any questions that you want answered, please send them to that email address. And Ms. Duvasich is very good at honoring that and getting a reply back to those inquiries. So, comments?
Yes, I have a comment. It's a rather important one, I believe. Very recently, House Slater set out this. It's called Take the 2022 Issue Survey. Has any of you received this?
Oh, no, George, that doesn't have anything to do with what.
Yeah, but it does have something to do with.
Is it that one?
School board. He asks questions with respect to, would you support legislation and so forth? So on currently, candidates do not require to identify, that is, school board candidates do not require, are not required to identify their political affiliations. What is your opinion? Straight ticket voting allows, so forth and so on. Anyway, I would hope that.
Is there, is this specificity is to this, is to this return to learn plan?
I'm sorry, again.
This, we're specifically focused on the return to learn plan, which speaks to COVID and masking, and that's what we're asking.
This would probably be more appropriate under audience participation.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were at that stage already.
No, yeah.
My apologies, I will present this again at appropriate time.
You know what, George? Here's what's unfortunate, I will say, before we move on. That should have been at the beginning.
Can we allow him to fill it out and do it again?
Yeah, I know, we will.
Can we do that?
I think we can, we can do that.
I'm sorry, I came a little late.
It's an audience participation.
It's usually on the agenda items only, but, okay, so let's move forward, and we'll come back to you.
I'll be happy.
Okay.
abstain for the moment.
Okay. Any other comments regarding the return to learn policies? Okay, that being not said.
We turn it back to the board now, because we've heard no public comment. We turn it back to the board now for further, for further action.
To, yes, we're going to take action on it, looking for a motion to approve this?
I'll make the motion.
I will second.
Is there any discussion?
I have seen that we're not going to school, doing this, so it's really nice to see.
It's moving to a state I was just in a zoo with other school board members.
Yeah, a lot of family type schools are doing, that's good.
Okay, let's take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, same sign. Oppose? Motion carries. Resolution number 729. This is the 2022 Board School Trustees' regular meeting dates. And this is our calendar of meetings. And let's see if my anniversary's on here. I don't, I don't see it hitting anything major this year regarding me. Board, can I get a motion to approve our 2022 Board School Trustee regular meeting dates?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Same sign of opposed, motion carries. And this last one here is our 2022-2023 school calendar. And I know we've all had an opportunity to look that over. Can I get a motion to move that forward for approval?
I'll make a motion.
Wow.
Well, welcome.
Can I get a second?
I'll second, yeah.
Any discussions on this calendar?
Okay, can we test the calendar?
I, we do want to add just a few things. One, thank you to Cindy Lieber, because she, she's the calendar girl. And I thank you for all that, and the formatting, and getting all those i's dotted and t's crossed. We work together with, with our union, with our admin team, and in hopes that this is something that helps our families as well. So, a few significant things. One, we're going to have less eLearn days. Please keep in mind that eLearn days are not a free day for educators. We are required by law to have certain education in certain areas, okay? That said, we still have to have eLearn days. So, there will be times when students are at home doing the virtual learning or being eLearned. The other, we made the eLearn days on either a Friday or a Monday, and we're hoping that helps families. If they're taking a long weekend, that it's not smack in the middle of the week to take a day off of work. That, not that obviously every eLearn day they're taking a vacation, but if they're taking a long weekend, it might make it easier for our families to take a Friday or a Monday off. With the exception of one Tuesday, which is voting day, we do not feel it's safe to have students in our buildings where we have, you know, people at our buildings, right? So, thank you, Mrs. Lieber, because she did a lot of hard work in that. And thank you to the union for your input and support in that as well.
Jason, would you want?
She said exactly that.
Oh, yeah, thank you, Cindy Lieber, and thank you to admin and teachers and everybody for doing that. That was the one thing that myself as well, as a working parent, I appreciate it being a Monday or Friday, because my extra time off work, at least it's a Monday or Friday, and it's not in the middle of the week. So, I appreciate this as well.
Well, I mean, that too, and think of it for kids. Now, going into a Friday eLearn day, they get their stuff up early, their weekend starts. Whereas on Tuesday, it's a Tuesday.
Yeah, it's just Tuesday.
It's just a Tuesday.
Yeah.
I remember having, the service days on Fridays, we would go home, teachers would be very service. Anyway, so, no.
Same, but yeah, thank you to everybody who was involved, I appreciate it. But thank you.
Okay, all in favor of approving the school calendar for 2022-2023?
Aye.
Aye. Same sign of opposed? Motion carries. And at this time, we're going to open this up for audience participation. We're going to start with George.
Ready?
Yeah.
My apologies for interrupting with the previous one. And then, yes, my comments are, I wanted to make copies of this for all of you. Unfortunately, I've been very busy today, and I was not able to do so. This survey wants to be simply an inquisition at school, whether or not you support certain changes to be made relative to the school board. For instance, as I said before, he asked whether or not people want the political affiliation of the school board members to be available to the state. Frankly, I think that's way out of line with that answer, no bearing on why, why somebody would run for school. Straight ticket voting, okay? He pretends here, do you support eliminating straight ticket voting? One of the most egregious, outrageous components in our voting system, in my opinion, is straight ticket voting. In my opinion, there is no such thing as political activity where, where direct involvement is not required. So, people go in, put the one-party lever, in my opinion, not doing their voting requirements or their voting duty, their responsibilities. Here, he mentions something on promoting fairness in women's sports, and says that there should be some restrictions relative to the biological sex of the applicant.
George? I, I know it's your time to say what you want to say, but I don't see how that affects us as a school board or a school system, because that's a political act that's sent out.
Yeah, well, I know, but the point is, what he's trying to do is get a large number of people to write in, and then
The law has to change before they can do anything about that.
Well, yeah, but the point is, he's trying to get a mandate for introducing legislation.
It's already in the bills.
I'm sorry.
That's already in the bills.
All right, so anyway, then finally, here is, is, if Indiana collects more taxes, more tax revenues than are necessary, than are necessary for meeting the requirements of the current budget, he gives three different options. One of them, of course, is to, rather than to increase tax funding for government services, pay down state debt or permanently cut taxes. And I think you know that almost everybody's going to say, cut back, cut taxes.
George, your timing, hold on, Jason. Your timing has come to an end. I would recommend you attend a town hall meeting and take that.
I will, but I think this affects the school board so significantly.
There is one thing to know that does, and that's party affiliation. And what I do know is if it does pass, anybody running for school board, we have to run in the primary and the general, we'd have to do it twice in that year. So, anyway, the time is up, we thank you, George, for your passion. As we move along, anybody else in the audience?
Question? I want just on a, or I mean, on the on the agenda, on the agenda. The school board meetings, as you said, are they already still staying the second Thursday of each month? Yes.
Also, we'll release the calendar, give us a couple of days, give us next week. Typically, I think we vote on it in January, so we're kind of a month ahead of time anyway. So, give us a week or so, we'll get it posted on the website for everybody as well.
That was going to be my question, when the school calendar would get posted, because a lot of people I know have jobs in their jobs require them to post their requested days off early in the year. So, just fuck with it.
Okay, anybody with anything that's good for the board, for the district? Any good thing for Yes?
I would just like to thank our staff. We did, our Honor Societies did a spreading cheer where they volunteered to be Secret Santas for staff members who would bring in toys for the Christmas emergency fund, and the outpouring this year of the vacation and the amount of toys that they brought in for our Christmas children has been amazing. As you came through, you probably walked past some of them that were in the display case. There's actually a whole nother pile in my office. And those are going to get picked up tomorrow and put with the baskets for the families. And I am just very grateful to work with such generous people.
That's great.
Okay, I have, I do, sorry, I have some Wadsworth family here, so I want to add a few, just give them some information. So, we're in phase four with our foundation projects. And just so you know, they're finishing the flooring in the corridor and the painting. In addition, they will have all the carpeting in the classrooms and painting of the classrooms. We will have a new air conditioner unit for our ladies in the kitchen over at Wadsworth, because I know that ASC went kaput. So, they will have a new unit for them, because it's very hot in that kitchen. There are other projects, so upper A is our next part for HVAC and the middle school. There's a few other things that are on there, but since they were here, I thought I'd just mention those updates to you. Also, I saved a really good part for last, that if you've been here a while, I wanted to announce that Mrs. Marilyn Brum was approved tonight, and she will be coming back to our district. She left us for a brief time, went to Illinois, and she's coming home. We are very excited to have her back.
Ash, did you have a I just wanted to piggyback off of what Cindy was saying, being a teacher on the side of, who has Secret Santas. This has been, as a first-year teacher, something that's really been special and near and dear to me. And I just want to point out that the National Honor Society had done, they've done a good job making us teachers feel special this year, so thank you for that.
You are special, teacher, you are.
Okay, that's it? Okay, so, the next regular board meeting will be next year, January 13th, 2022, 6:00 PM, in this room. And having said that, can I get a motion to, that, Jordan?
I'll make the motion.
Oh, yes.
Who wants to second it?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's on the vote.